United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. School Committee Chair Report. I have nothing to report at this time. Resource Committee.
Resource in the school building, I'm going to pass tonight. The notes were not ready today, so they'll be ready for the next meeting.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Moving forward, Policy Committee, Mr. Horgan.
Nothing to report at this time. We have a meeting scheduled for later this month, so at our next meeting, I'll have something.
Any questions? Moving on, Students Support Committee, Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
We have nothing new to report.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. School Personnel Committee, that would be me, and I have nothing to report at this time. Nor on the Executive Committee. We don't, we haven't been having student reps, correct? So, Bob, that's, that's accurate, right?
That's accurate.
Correct. All right. Approval of the minutes for the previous school committee meeting of November 16th, 2020.
Motion, we approve the minutes.
Motion made.
Second.
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 Second. All in favor, we will do this by roll call. Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Craigin.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Yes, it is unanimous approval of the meetings in November 16th, 2020. Executive session, not at this time. Communications, Ms. Craigin, you wanted to share some communications with the school committee and the public, please.
I do. Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first is that upcoming is the Fitchburg Cultural Council deadline, which is December 14th, 11:59 PM. And if there are local artists or people interested in doing an arts or cultural project in Fitchburg, they should visit massculturalcouncil.org, and that's C-O-U-N-C-I-L dot org. And that link will take you right to the application, which is easy. Stratton Players is applying for one grant to support a project that will be theater. We are going to have theater with the blessings, we hope, of the trustees of the burial grounds. But we've talked to Fitchburg Historical Society, who are collaborating, artists and ancestors. A dramatic reenactment and walking tour at Forest Hill Cemetery is being planned. And if you've ever been curious about what Helen Stratton, the founder of the, of the Stratton Players, was like as a person, because she was a longtime English teacher at Fitchburg Public, at Fitchburg High School. She originally started as the librarian, so she was very erudite. And her friendship with Mrs. Fay Crocker, that helped lead to the founding of the theater. H.M. Francis, the brilliant architect of both commercial and domestic architecture here in Fitchburg. He is buried not far from the Crockers. We also have Olin Warner, who was active in, up in New Hampshire, but who did an amazing, beautiful brass plaque of his parents when they passed on. Sybil Fairbanks, who was a painter. And then Herbert Adams, who designed our Boys and the Turtles Fountain at the Upper Common. And his wife, who modeled for the World War I sculpture, which is on the very tall, very tall, you know, plinth. His wife Adeline was a writer of short stories as well as art history. So basically, we have this amazing population, and I'm working with Don Lassola. This is a co-production with the Fitchburg Historical Society. And we are really excited to be able to do theater for the public. It's a walking tour. It'll be out of doors. There'll be social distancing. There will be masks. But there will be a chance to have real theater, and we do plan to cast children and young adults, as well as, you know, veteran Stratton players in this. So we are planning to apply for a Cultural Council grant, but I wanted to put it out to other artists that Fitchburg Cultural Council loves. Loves this kind of, I shouldn't say this kind of application, but they want to help make Fitchburg very vibrant. And we have actually a spouse of a member, which is Pete Stevens, because I know Claudia's been on for some years. And she's, she's been really working hard to, you know, get applications coming in.
That's great.
Yep.
Questions from the committee? What an impressive history we have, don't we? It, it really is, yeah. It was, it is. It was and still is a city that makes things and has always been creative and, and built around the strength of our industries. So we're, and it's great that Stratton, once again, we got to help you guys with Lucy's barn. We got to get that open. We really do. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So thanks, everyone. Any other questions? Thank you, Sal. Mr. Superintendent, do we have anyone signing up for public comment this evening?
No, not that I'm aware of.
All right, moving on, Superintendent's Report, Mr. Jokel.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, first up, we have an update on the Crocker Elementary Core Project. With us from the architecture firm of SOM is Diana Niklaus and Ed Borje. And also accompanying them are Anthony DeLuzio, Liz Geltus, and Ken Gaiat from Colliers, the project managers. So Diana, I think you are going to share your screen.
I will, thanks. All right, can everyone see?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So Tony's going to start it off with an update of our schedule.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to give you this presentation tonight. Going to bring you up to speed on the design progress, as well as the schedule and the overall progress of the Crocker Elementary School. As we last left off, previously, previously meeting with you, we did in fact submit for the Preferred Solution Report, what we term the PSR, back in September. Had a couple of follow-up meetings with the MSBA, resulting in their board approval. Move forward with a new build behind the current Crocker School. It'll impose a little bit on the current footprint, but basically a replacement of the existing school with a new facility on the same site. That was approved at the October board meeting. And that approval moved us into what you see here as Module Four Schematic Design. And that's really where the architect, the OPM, the educational team, the school building committee, really start to focus in on the details, what this school needs to accommodate for an overall program. Not only the education and the population of the students, but the other benefits that it can bring from both community and city standpoint. So this process over the next four months is really interviewing the, the people that are going to work in the facility, the educators that are going to work in the facility, the facilities team that's going to have to manage this new building moving forward after it's built, making sure that we adhere to the MSBA guidelines, trying to keep all of our solutions and all of the wishes and wants of the various participants within the budget, making sure that we hold to city guidelines and those types of requirements. So that's basically about a four-month process. As we get closer to that submission time in April, we'll hold a couple of review meetings. We hold, you know, more formal document presentation than what you're going to see here tonight. This is still very much a work in progress. We haven't concluded all of the informational gathering meetings that are taking place. Diana and her team continue to work through many of those meetings this week, last week, and over the next several weeks to kind of form the schematic. And that information informs the design, the design team from both architectural, site civil, building envelope, glass glazing, code compliance. Everybody works together to bring that schematic design to a solution for a submission currently scheduled for April 7th, as you see on the schedule here. And hopefully, we get our MSBA next board approval late June of 2021. That really sets us up then to proceed with a more robust kind of technical design process throughout the summer and fall, as the schedule progresses and as the design progresses. So we need to continue gathering over the next few months, information, wish list, criteria of design, program requirements, energy conservation requirements, working with Unitel and the other utilities from within the city, and shoot for that June approval. So that's kind of our schedule. If you have any questions as to where we've been and where we currently are. And other than that, Diana will lead you through the current progress of the design.
Okay, thanks, Tony. So tonight, we're going to look at plan updates and show you some elevations. We're not going to show the site tonight. We are still working with our landscape architect and our civil engineer on ensuring that we have the most cost-effective and code-compliant approach to the design. For the building itself, the design team has worked through a lot of detailed investigations on all the systems in the building. So we validated constructibility, affordability, durability of these systems. And we've done that by speaking directly with representatives of manufacturers and installers. These are really important discussions so that we can make sure that we provide the district with the best value for their money. So I'm not going to spend too much time on this slide because I have blow-ups of each portion of the building. But just a quick reminder, we have this very long building that's sitting on that central plateau of the, of the tiered site. And we are working hard to make sure that it stays within that profile. So this is the first floor, and this is the area where we enter the building. So we have reconfigured this administrative area and support area. We've worked very closely with Casey, with Principal, on what is needed in this area. So we've had more detailed discussions, as Tony said, about what needs to go into the admin offices, where they are, you know, what the access is like, and we still, you know, have a very strong connection to this sort of public area when people come into the building. We have reconfigured this layout in particular to put, we had a classroom down here originally, which was the health classroom, which, which you'll see now on the second floor. This, this is a sped and flex classroom that we've put in. We have the nurses area, and we've structured this so that folks can enter into the nurses area without getting into the secure, more secure area of the offices. And then back here, we have several rooms that are flex offices for either speech therapy, or coaches, or just spare offices when needed. And we have a conference room for the sped and IEP meetings. Mechanical has been more developed with our consultants. We've, we had another good meeting today regarding all of this sort of building infrastructure, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. So the gym has remained largely the same, although we rotated it. It used to be oriented in the opposite direction, and this actually saved us some money by, you know, involving less of the site on the southern side of the site. So we've expanded the storage there. We've worked to make a series of spaces that the custodians can use that are easily accessible to the loading dock. And then our kitchen has gotten more detailed as well. We met today with our kitchen consultant and with the Food Services Department, Nutritional Services for the district, and got some great feedback. We've added a ramp at our stage. I think most of you probably remember this area is raised by four feet. This is the music room. So now we have a ramp that provides access to the stage, but we also have a ramp that goes off to the classroom block. And we have what are called sit steps, so that kids can sit out there or potentially perform. We understand that you have, often have a whole grade performing at once. I think I've covered all of, all of the areas that have been impacted in, in this zone since you've last seen it. We'll go on to the next one. So in the, what we call the academic block, this is the block that has two learning communities on the lower level and two on the upper level. We have added a third egress stair here. We worked to try to keep it to a minimum of two, but our code consultant, you know, took a closer look in terms of egress, based on the occupancy and the width of egress that's required overall, that calculation. We've reconfigured the, the core toilets here. So we had gotten feedback that, that it was preferable to not have a door, but have a view to the sinks and the mirror. So that has been set up, as well as a janitor's closet that will sit between those two restrooms. We have expanded the extended learning a bit here with the new stair. And we still have quite a bit on, on, in this academic block. So we've also, you know, added more details like water fountains. You can only, you can only see these little black blobs on the screen, but that's the kind of level of detail that we've gotten into. You know, we've looked at how to have sinks and millwork in the classrooms, but we're still learning more about the classroom layouts and what's needed there. Our furniture consultant participated in one of the calls, where we talked about kind of what, what the district would look for in terms of classroom furniture. So many levels of coordination with consultants and the district to give us more information to advance the design. Okay, so now on the second level. I mentioned earlier that the health classroom had been down in the academic block, which we learned was not so convenient, and we've moved it up here. We originally had two art classrooms, but the district is able to have a single art classroom. And this seemed like a good area for the health classroom, because then you have some of the specials grouped together. You have art, health, and the media center. We've expanded a media center office here, and we've looked at, we looked at a preliminary furniture layout, but again, this will evolve quite a bit. We had a great meeting discussing the media center and what that, what that program does and what, and what the needs are for the students. And you won't see so many bookshelves, but we'll have a more developed version of that soon. We've reconfigured some doors up to the outdoor learning. Some of these are small things. And the office I mentioned, this classroom block remains pretty much the same as it was. We still have outdoor access and, you know, the concept of a garden or, you know, having at least containers out there that could support a lot of classes, but would also really be advantageous for the health classroom in, in particular. And then finally, the upper level of the, of the academic block. We've, again, we have the, the new stair, and I think I covered most of the other changes that we've made relative to the learning communities on the lower level. We did create a bit more space in the way that this ramp was laid out, so that we could have the double doors here. We'd originally looked at more of a sliding door, and this was, that was not the best solution. So that's why we made, made a little bit more room there. And like I said before, we reconfigured the toilets and the janitor's closets. So that's a quick, hopefully, quick enough rundown of what's happening with the plans. So now, I want to talk a little bit about the exterior of the building, and we're going to look at some elevations. We've looked at a lot of different materials for the exterior, but we've, we are using a fiber cement panel rain screen. So a fiber cement panel is a very durable material, but it's also got a very good price point. And so we think that it would bring the best value on the exterior wall. We had a presentation to some of the folks in the districts about the sort of technical aspects of this material. And we also have a list of local installations, should people want to go see what this material is like. So I'm going to move on to the elevations. I think one of my children is printing in my office, so I'm going to turn that off. Sorry about that. That's what it's like with school at home, right? Okay, so here are the elevations. So I mentioned this fiber cement material. We looked at that as something that would be, you know, very economical, particularly when it's laid out in these sort of rectangular configurations. But we, we thought, you know, with our biophilic approach, that we wanted to do something that had a little more interest on some of the elevations. So you can see here this biophilic pattern that we have. It's, it's sort of, you know, inspired by both, you know, trees, but also things that are sort of earthy in color. And these colors are not super literal. We're still looking at color options. But in order to make something like that affordable, we looked at continuing to take the rectangular panels, but putting a single cut in them and then rearranging them so that we can create this dynamic pattern. So looking at these elevations, this is the gym elevation and where you would come into the building. So here we have a series of windows that would be operable. The gym won't be air-conditioned. So the, there will be operable windows on the south and the north side of the gym. And so we've cut the pattern into the glazing there. Or rather, I should say, the glazing will go where we would have panels otherwise. And then you can see other areas where we've used this patterning on the solid wall. Where all of the academic, you can see all of the academic block has that rectangular pattern. We've reduced the amount of glazing a bit here in the classrooms. We think this is a better pattern, and it works better with our structural grid. We've been working with our structural engineer quite a bit. So in addition to the, the panels and then the glazing that we've talked about, we, we do have two areas of curtain wall, and you might remember looking at this key plan over here. We talked about this as double-height curtain wall. And that is something that we treat as a more precious material on the building in terms of how much we use it. So right now, we're using it here, and we're looking at putting some coloring into that glazing. So in particular, it would provide some diverse light coming into both the media center and the cafeteria, because you'd have this kind of, you know, mosaic effect of, of light coming in through there. And then we also have them in a few other select areas, like on the back of the academic block space. So you can see in this photo kind of what that glazing looks like. This is a project that, that some of the SOM team members have worked on in the past. So this gives you a really quick overview of our exterior wall concept. And that's all we are presenting tonight, but we look forward to your questions and comments.
Diana, the, the outdoor learning initiative or concepts or what have you, is that something SOM has focused on, or is this, does this, is this a requirement of MSBA to have some of those kinds of spaces?
So.
Curiosity question.
Thank you, Mayor. So it's not a requirement in the sense that it's on the space summary that lists all of the spaces that they anticipate that you would have and that they would require that you have. However, they, they are very interested, as an agency, in encouraging outdoor learning. And we also really have embraced that concept because it's very much part of the biophilic design approach that we've talked about since we, you know, presented to you at the MSBA originally. So, you know, there are some sort of best practices for outdoor learning that we're looking at. Our landscape architect is working with us on that. But it's a really critical component, I think, for the way that this building will be used. So that's, I can get into more detail about where they are, but again, the site is sort of in flux. So I think you've seen on the plans.
Does it take into, into account that we're blessed with four distinct seasons?
Does it take into account that we are blessed with four distinct seasons?
Yeah.
Yes, it does.
Mostly winter.
What's that?
Mostly winter.
Mostly winter, sure. It does take that into account. I mean, we don't expect it to, that you'll be out there with the foot of snow, but if you want to go out there, you'll be able to. You know, I think the garden will probably not get through all four seasons, but the students will have access to that in the fall and in the spring, or just some kind of planting.
I think, I think, you know, it has, I, I think it would be wonderful. I just, yeah, that, that's good, okay.
We will have, we'll have more information on that in future meetings, but it's definitely part of the, the concept that we have.
Thank you.
I mean, the site is incredible, and, you know, at a minimum, students need to be able to just come out and, like, experience that. Doesn't have to be anything complicated.
Okay.
I have a question.
Diana, it's Liz. Sorry, just one other note about the outdoor learning. It's also something that MSBA required, not specifically for outdoor learning, but for the flexibility to expand the building in the future, so that a lot of those outdoor learning spaces were flagged as future expansion, should we need to add another classroom or other admin space or whatever it was.
Okay.
Thanks, Liz. That's right.
I have a couple of questions. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Um, one thing is, one slide you said there are other sites where you can see this. I, I think I saw Fitchburg High School. I was trying to identify the other places.
Um, so, uh, this is the Bel Air Middle School, which I think is in Texas.
Oh, we can't go, we can't see that.
This is the Shady Hill School, which is in Cambridge, so you can see that one. This one's in Germany, so we're not going to that one. This one is in Texas, and this one is, I can't remember where Damon College is. However, we do have a list that we can send out to folks if they would like to go that is for buildings that are in our area.
Oh, okay, so it's not likely we'll see that. Another thing, no basement in this. Is that, is it just a ground level?
That's correct. There's no basement. But I mean, that, you know, we're trying to keep the site costs minimized, and we didn't see any, any benefit in building a basement. And our site approach, in fact, sort of avoids that, so that we don't have to move as much earth.
Uh-huh, and eventually, we'll see how the layout coincides with exit places, you know, to the streets and safety considerations and all of that. We just spend some time on that.
So that's a sort of multi-layered process. I mentioned we've been working with our code consultant on, you know, where the egress is, how wide the egress is. But also, as we develop the site plan, that's an important piece of it. So when we review the site with you all, you will see how people egress and where they go outside.
And then I, all of this, I see flat rooftops, and we have trouble with snow on flat roofs. And will you discuss that at some length at some point? The clearance, keeping the, the roofs clear?
So the roofs are designed to support Massachusetts snow loads, and they are, even though they're flat in what we see from outside of the building, they are sloped and have two forms of drainage, so that if one system backs up, another system picks up. So that is something we've taken into account, the fact that you, that I know Fitchburg gets a lot of snow.
Mm-hmm, and, and what about protection from earthquakes and things like that?
So for that, we'll be following the latest edition of the structural code. And that, that includes a seismic design component that would address that.
But that'll come up at another point, that you'll, that you'll let us know about those kinds of things?
We can. We can do that, yes.
I'd like to know that, yeah.
Okay.
Diana, you kind of touched on a little bit, but I was concerned about the evacuation routes out of school by a drill. You will provide that information to us?
We definitely will, and, and even in our schematic design set, we'll have dedicated plans that are information about the code and specifically show the travel distances to the egress, where, you know, the primary and secondary paths for egress, and what the, the path of travel is once outside the building. Absolutely.
Diana and Tony, this is Jim Walsh. I have two questions. The fiber cement exterior, obviously, you may have answered my question by your slide since it does exist in a building here in New England. Is there any different type of maintenance upkeep for that type of exterior versus other exteriors that, you know, brick, cement, et cetera?
So I'm going to back up and address one thing. Maybe I was not clear. We do have a list of installations of this material in New England. So it's not, it's not a new thing at all in New England. And we are happy to provide that. Some of them, I mean, Rhode Island has one, East Boston has one. Our team has gone and looked at them as well. So we're happy to pass that on. So you can, you can, absolutely, people can go look at them. This is a very durable material. We spent quite a while talking to one of the representatives from a particular manufacturer recently with the build, some members of the building committee. And we talked a lot about durability and longevity and repair. And, you know, if you think about a masonry wall, you have to re-point that, you know, periodically. So you don't have that kind of maintenance on this. The panels can be replaced fairly easily if they need to. They have fasteners on the outside. I don't know if you saw that in the picture, particularly here. You can see some of the small fasteners. So, you know, our OPMs actually did ask a lot of great questions of this representative in terms of durability. And, you know, we, it is one of the materials where there are lots and lots of options, but we're focusing strictly on the ones that are both durable and economical. Because there are a few systems that may be less economical but are not as durable. And then there are other systems that are strictly more expensive because they have like some special, you know, finish feature, like a speckle of color or something like that. So we're working very closely with those individuals to understand, you know, what the proper specification will be so that we can have a public bid. You know, we have to have three manufacturers and understand, you know, which ones are manufactured locally, you know, which installations locally have not done well and why and which products those are. So does that answer your question?
It does. And my second question goes back to the timeline in Tony's presentation, where it said everything we present in the June 21 meeting, MSBA would approve. Does that mean, at the June 23 meeting, sorry, their approval, does that mean that it's a go for us to actually build a new Crocker School?
So we have to submit the schematic design. Our target is April 7 for the June MSBA Board of Directors meeting. Hopefully, they'll have a couple of conference calls. They'll want a presentation. Very much of the same design philosophy, the technical aspects, the exterior, all the things that you're asking, they run through. And then what they would do is give us formal approval to move forward. We need to still develop the budget agreement, make sure that we're on budget before they give us their formal, you know, 100% go ahead. We need to come to a budget statement agreement that aligns all of the work that Diana's team is working on now to the budget, reconfirmation with city finance, auditing, treasurer. Does your design now meet your budget, which is in flux right now? As Diana said, we still have a lot of site issues that we're working through on the cost. We need to look at rain screen along with a million other finishes and technical aspects of the building to get the cost aligned. And we need to bring all that to them at June meeting.
Okay, thank you. Great presentation, appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Diana, with this COVID that we're experiencing, we've had lots of questions come up about the capabilities of fresh air and whatever's involved that teachers would consider. Has, have all of our current difficulties been considered in this development?
So, yes, in the sense that, like, all of the classrooms have operable windows, which is obviously an important component of that. But the MSBA has specifically stated that they don't, they're not looking for people to design COVID-specific facilities because, you know, this is a 50-year building. So while, you know, we will definitely look at materials and surfaces and that sort of thing, there is, there is not a lot of specific work that would be done in the design. You know, if you're going to, if you're going to separate people six feet, it doesn't change the architecture as much. You're going to have fewer people in the same spaces. I think very much how schools are addressing this now. So and then obviously, we're going to have, you know, mechanical ventilation systems that will, you know, be able to include the newest filters that are required and that are viewed as being the best for something like COVID.
Good, yeah. I would think that would be high on the list of awarenesses, you know, to have it planned and cared for, built in.
Yes.
Diana, will we be talking about the outside of the building, the grounds such as trees and shrubbery? I don't want to see a lot of trees go up and cause problems at other buildings where it shaded the buildings, caused the whole, and so forth. So is that something you'll talk about at some time?
Oh, definitely, we will. I mean, at this point, we're not considering adding a lot of trees. I think.
Yeah, I know that's down the road.
Yes, that is down the road. But I don't see a scenario where we would add any trees close to the building or anywhere else for that matter. I think this, this has abundant, you know, wooded area around it, so. Our pictures, you know, show some trees, which is just sort of atmospheric, but.
I've seen it in some of our buildings too, where the shrubbery has blocked the air intake and, you know, so looking to avoid some of those problems.
Understood, yes.
And what you're presenting here, and when you consider cost, does that include any demolition costs to the current sites?
Demolition will be included in the construction estimate, yes.
It's in our total project budget. We will include the demolition as well as the site work.
This is Sally. I have a couple of observations, which is, looking at that first floor and imagining the, you know, the holiday concert that so many of our kids were participating in, I can see how the hallways will be, you know, good places for kids to line up with access to the gymnasium and teachers bringing the grades in. If it was a, you know, a full, depending on what school it is, sometimes the holiday concert is two nights versus one. But it seems like there's really ample space. The other observation I have, I'm, my mother was a very longtime kindergarten teacher. I spent my childhood reading early childhood education, you know, manuals and magazines that came into our house. And the circularity of the classrooms, the fact that the classrooms are in these mini campuses with, you know, no more than like four rooms until you have to take a turn and then go to the next classroom, seems to me very child-oriented in terms of making a child feel like they're part of this smaller community within the larger community of the school. So I don't know what the term is for the, you know, the grade level, but I think that's a really, you know, a sharp, you know, a really sharp design feature because it, you know, no one's going to get, you know, really mislaid. They're not going to mislay themselves en route to second grade. And the bathrooms are easily, it's very easily, easy to understand, you know, how they can get to them. And also for monitoring, because so much time is spent by teachers, you know, with the monitoring of kids and bathrooms and so forth. This, this seems like it's nice, it's a tight, it's a, it's a tight design attribute. And I, I, I like it. And it's beyond exciting to think about a new school. I mean, that's like a once in a, you know, once every 20 years. Or, you know, for us, it's been longer than 20 years, but not by much. But this is exciting. And it's, especially the outdoor amphitheater aspect. That's, I see that being so well-used because the Crocker campus is truly lovely and is, you know, it lends itself to being kind of a garden and a forest. And, you know, it's got some enchantments in its site situation. So that's really what, what I have, just that the, you know, it seems child-scaled. It's not for adults. You guys have created something for children. And I, I'm, I like that a lot, so well done.
Thank you.
Diane, I have another thought in mind. Is there any use of roof space? I'm thinking of garden, roof, you know, I don't know. Have you considered anything rather than simply as a roof? Might it be?
We do have, so, so this is the music room on the first level. And the roof of that volume would be outdoor learning off of the media center. And then if you're in the health classroom here or the art classroom, you have access to sort of this outdoor plinth with steps. Again, kids could sit on the steps. And then, you know, we think that this would be a nice area for a garden. And that, that doesn't have to be a formally landscaped garden. It may be, you know, a series of containers that people are growing. You know, maybe kids have individual pots out there or whatever. So that, so that area is also designed as sort of a roof access. And then this roof access will also provide circulation over to the fields as well this one here. So we also use the roofs as a way to get people to the landscape, the adjacent landscape if they're on the upper level.
Interesting.
Diana, I just.
You're cutting out, Pete.
Oh, can, can, could Diana, could you tell the committee what SOM stands for?
I'd be happy to tell the committee that. SOM is a multilingual word that means together or collaborate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nice.
Any other questions?
Hey, Diana, Tony, Ed, Liz, and Ken, thank you for your presentation. And, you know, just as a general information update, SOM and Colliers have been meeting with staff throughout the district. Today was food service and facilities to go over the kitchen design, mechanical systems and ventilation. So the meetings are happening twice a week to gather information to advance these schematic designs forward. So we look forward to the next update.
Diane, I'm sorry, it's Rosemary again. All these ideas popping in my head. And I'm thinking of danger and, you know, episodes and all of that. Are there any, I know you have your ordinary exits, like all the schools and designs and all of that and where to go, how to get out. But might there be any thinking of rope ladders? You know, sometimes in fires and houses and things, they have these other possibilities that could be put into use if you needed to get out quickly. You know what I'm saying?
I do know what you're saying. We haven't explored anything like that. I mean, the code really, you know, regulates how people leave the building in case of a fire. So that's really what we follow.
It could be fire, but it could be any other thing, not only fire.
It could be, right.
An incident.
I mean, another thing that I didn't really focus on tonight, but just so you know, is that the building can be closed off into sort of pieces. So like, from a security point of view, if you have an event in the gym and you only want to have access to the gym for, you know, members of the public, these doors are locked. They still have access to the restrooms and they have access to the gym. And that's all they need. Then there's kind of, there's a second layer here. So if you have an event that's only the cafeteria or, and the gym, then no one can go past this. They can't get into the academic block. The, in the, in that case, you would also be locking the doors, you know, to the stairwells if you're having an event like that because people wouldn't need to go upstairs. So if you have, you know, a security incident in the school, it's easy to close off the whole academic block, to lock it down. And I think that's, that's one of the things that we feel is really strong in this design, is that it's easy to keep, you know, people within certain compartments, so to speak, of the building. But we are, we still are working with our, we have a security consultant who is also going to look at this in more detail. So we'll have more information on that moving along as well.
And Diana, if I can also add to that, Rosemary, as part of the design process, as this floor plan comes together and we develop the site plan, we will be meeting with Fitchburg Police, Fitchburg Fire, as well as the team's security consultant to really talk about those aspects of anything that might happen on this facility. How are we best providing, you know, both access and egress for first responders in the case of an emergency?
Thank you.
Well, thank you, great questions.
Okay, thank you, Diana. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, next up this evening, we have Kathy Brady, a familiar person, face to many of you, along with Rowan DeManch, to give an update on our Early Childhood Literacy Initiative, also known as Footsteps to Brilliance. So Kathy, you're up. Kathy, do you have your audio on?
Thank you, thank you. So hello, everyone, it's so nice to see you all. I saw you about a year ago. And we were talking about Footsteps to Brilliance and its use within our school and within the community. And I wanted to let you know that Fitchburg Public Schools remains committed to providing early literacy initiatives to our community members, our families and agencies that we partner with, and also at our early grades within the school system. In January of this year, Superintendent Joe Kla and I, in a conference call with Footsteps to Brilliance, were able to negotiate another five-year contract. So we have Footsteps to Brilliance now for another full five years. And we are happy to also announce that Footsteps to Brilliance has increased its app potential, meaning that everything that's in Footsteps to Brilliance has now been broken down into two additional apps. The first one being Clever Kids University, which is appropriate and applicable for children ages two through five. So we use it in our pre-Ks and we're seeing that our community pre-Ks use it as well. We also have I Can Read, which is appropriate for students who are aged kindergarten and transitional K1 students. And then the Footsteps to Brilliance app itself, the original app, is appropriate for students pre-K or age two up to age nine. And I know that many of you are familiar with this and have looked at this tool before. And I sent you some data. And I've put this data on this handout as well so that our community members can see our use. Just from August until December 1st, the Fitchburg Public Schools has been able to have all of our students who have been using this read 1.7 million words and 2,800 books. Now, the games that are played are games that are supportive of and develop the skills for each of the books that are read. So while it looks as though they may be playing more games than books, for every book that we, that a child reads, there are two to four skills that they are learning in conjunction with that book. So to see that it's two to four times higher is appropriate because they're working on those skills. We also are seeing an increase in the number of books that are being written. Now, the hours of literacy for community partners and home users is also grown over time. And we are so happy to see that we have 1.1 million words that are being read, almost 1.2 million words. And that students who are, children who are living and using this at home are using it vibrantly as well. When we take a look, the data is showing us who in our community is using this. Now, when it comes to our district schools, our pre-K is the largest. our pre K is the largest population using it, but I want to let you know and ensure people, assure people that it's not just our nine pre K classes. It's also the pre K classes that are housed at MACH, the Head Start, and at our community care centers that are home pre Ks as well. So we have a lot of students who are using it, who are at that four-year-old level. And even within the community, the age of student, a child that is using it at the highest level are four-year-olds. Now, one of the questions that we wanted to explore through um central office and taking a look at this is what's happening during COVID? How has this been used and have we seen an increase in the use of this particular tool? So what we did was is we really looked at some longitudinal data and we compared spring of summer with 2019 with the spring of summer of 2020. And we are seeing a word exposure increase of 19% and usage 42%. During just plain summer activity, we also saw an increase. So what our students were doing and our and the children in the community were doing, were using this to a higher degree and part of that was due to the fact that we were reaching out. Um we created an email with Superintendent Jokla's picture on it and we sent it out to all of our families who are pre K and K-aged students and let the parents know that there was an aunt, there was a free app for them to use to bring literacy into their homes. And so that really um showed some some growth for us and we're really happy about that. Our year-by-year comparison for word exposure, we are seeing we went from 19 million to 23 million during um the 2019-2020 school year as opposed to the year before that. And I want to tell you that every single year that we have used this app, we have seen significant growth. So we have more children and families using it in the community than we had the year previous to that. So so the news is really wonderful when it comes to the use of Footsteps to Brilliance. And I'm not sure, I'm sure Rowan wants to weigh in and say something as well.
Well, no, we are seeing it be especially useful in remote learning. So a lot of our teachers are still continuing to utilize the lesson plans um that are really helpful to families and then they can do a lot of the activities that coordinate with that as well. So we do see an increase, um even though right now we're fully in remote and we do have a lower number of preschool students than we've had um we had last year. So we're still seeing um a high rate of usage for Footsteps to Brilliance.
And just as a quick reminder to everyone, and I I know a few of you, school committee members and Mr. Mayor, you have looked at this tool and you have been to all of our outreach opportunities when we when we meet with families. Um we haven't had the opportunity to do that this year because we're remaining distanced from one another. But in fact, emailing emailing families has really resulted in some positive growth. But it's a 15-minute-a-day app. It is approved by the Federal Department of Education in terms of exposure using a device for 15 minutes per day. And what we're finding is that um our families are using it in lots of different ways and supporting students and and we're seeing, we are seeing um considerable growth from the data that I've been looking at when it comes to reading comprehension, when it comes to phonological awareness and when it comes to vocabulary growth. And it's not, it's not a primary tool. It is a supplemental tool. It's something that they would do in addition to whatever would be happening in the classroom. So we have seen some growth as well in um teachers are using it as a read aloud and getting students to use it then for outside-of-school time. Um close to 75% to 80% of the use that we're seeing is outside of school hours. And that means that the students are are really enjoying this and using it to their benefit during out-of-school time. Any questions?
Hi Kathy, this is Jean. I have a question. How are you?
Well.
Good to see you. Um I remember when we first adopted this, we were hoping that, you know, by the time the preschool kids um got to kindergarten, we'd see a real difference in um reading comprehension, or maybe not, maybe you don't call it that in kindergarten, right? But like word comprehension and um and obviously the timing is bad because school is very different right now, but. So that's one question, like have we got any um information about whether the it has influenced results um in kindergarten? And then the second one is um all the data is measured in hour usage and I was just curious, like can we see how many individual users there are with that? So those two things.
So we can uh take a look at, we've had an average of 350 to 450 students on any given year and they change as they grow. They don't necessarily use it. They're new students that that begin to use it. But we've seen a steady increase in that. It used to just be our pre K students and our students that were at Head Start and MACH. Um we're now seeing an increase in the number of students in the community that are using it. The measurement is not always the number of words that are read, but when we dig deeper into um the data, we're really looking at has a student mastered the skills at that particular grade level, at the pre K level, at the K level, at the grade one level? And we're able to determine that. But interestingly enough, um COVID has slowed this process down, but we were in the midst of doing a research-based study with Footsteps to Brilliance by taking a look at who has used it as a three and four-year-old and what does it, what do their scores look like in kindergarten? So we are ready to launch into that. We've been, um we're working toward that. And once we have that data, I'll be able to bring that back to school committee and share that with you and Rowan will be able to share. And and Eva's involved with us in this as well and so is John Thompson. We're all working together on this.
So can I um, Jean, I can answer your question. We actually uh had a meeting today as central office cabinet members um and looked at our iReady data. And they looked at our iReady data from last year, kindergarteners entering um in reading and this year's kindergarten entering and reading. So last year, last school year, we had about 14% of students in the green. That's at at or above grade level. And with the data they presented to us today, we had about 65% of kindergarteners in the green. Now granted, we got to remember that the testing atmosphere was different. Students did take that assessment uh this year at home. But um we did have, you know, according to the data, we did have some growth. So.
Thank you. That's interesting.
I have a um, I I just wanted to um, as I'm looking at this, I I see um, you know, books read 2,820 and then we have books written, 835. I I can't think of any other circumstance where 835 books, you know, would be written. Um and I have a quick observation and then I'd like to ask um Kathy or Rowan, Kathy, Rowan, John or Eva, just to comment on that book's written part because it's it's one thing to read, but it's another thing to write and create and then have your inspiration be there on on, you know, in reality. So I was in a, I don't know, local shop and one of our preschool teachers um recognized me, so we had a brief conversation. And I said to her, how are things going? Talk to me about like, how's your day? What's it like? And I, it was a long line, so we could have this conversation. And she said that things were going really, I mean, again, this is a super positive preschool teacher to begin with. Um and she said things are going really well and she said the Footsteps to Brilliance is amazing. Our kids are doing better than I think they might have done in school. And I said, that's an astonishing observation because we are so concerned about the social and emotional piece. And she agreed that that was, you know, such a, you know, that that part was really difficult. But that on the learning side, this program and the work the teachers are doing are showing these big gains. So I wanted to bring that to everyone here tonight, seeing we had uh FTB on our on our list. But um anyway, if if you could, folks could talk about the the books written, because I've seen the books that kids can write books and it's, there's programming that goes along with it. Um and do we have any goals for these books that they're writing?
We do, Sally.
Yay.
And I mean, John can talk a little bit about this. Uh John and I had a plan and it was to begin, I think, the third week in March.
Yes, I think that's what we set out for, March 2020.
And unfortunately, school was clamped down, but uh our goal was this, that I was to go with a literacy coach and we were going to start at Ryan Gold and I was going to go into kindergarten classes with a literacy coach, do a lesson, model a lesson on um by reading a story and having the students then use. This app has a writing tool on it that not only allows them in coordination with a book to bring the background pictures and characters over, but allows them to type, allows them to write and allows them to free draw. So we were getting ready to show them how to use this app to actually write a story based upon a topic and we were picking just the right pet because we thought that children at the kindergarten level would love to just write about an animal that they knew or loved or would like to have. And what's nice about that is any story that's written in any book that's created in Footsteps to Brilliance is saved automatically. So I can go through and check. Some of them are scribbles. Some of those 800 books are just scribbles, but some of them are legitimate. And I think last year when I visited with you folks, I brought one or two books in to let you see what those books look like. Um but we are in fact have as a goal to use this particular app as a tool for students to do their writing. And that was what our next step in the implementation of this as a tool that's being used in school. Because in fact, we really um don't want to supplant any other uh curriculum material that's being used. But we thought this would be the gateway into introducing students who had not seen F2B into using it and would reinforce with kids who had seen it in the past, the way they could use this as a writing tool. So that's still an area that we need to grow. Um and we know, we know that, but we we have plans. I met with one of the literacy coaches today. Um it was Crocker's Literacy Coach and we have some plans on how to roll this out to make sure that teachers are implementing it with fidelity and more similar than not across classrooms. But again, it's only 15 minutes a day.
Um I'd love to talk to you further about this Kathy and I'll reach out because having these children having their works published, I I think would be remarkable and there's got to be some kind of world record, like most number of, you know, writers under the age of nine that we could probably, you know, win. Um aside from the fact of the, you know, the verifiable wonderfulness of having your work, you know, printed. So I'm happy to talk, I'll I'll email all of you guys.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Hey Kathy and Rowan, thank you. And just to remind everybody that uh Fitchburg Families First threw a donation from the Cathedral Fund at the Fitchburg Art Museum. It's also um secured 50 devices. Uh they Kindle Fires or what's what's the exact name? Uh Eva's nodding, so they are Kindle Fires uh that will be distributed. Uh so we can have more students uh learning on these uh on this platform. So. Yes. Thank you to everybody. We're we're making progress and uh this has been a lot of work over several years and uh the work continues and it looks like it's gaining some traction here during some uh unusual times. So thank you again. So uh at this point, I'd like to uh give a little bit of an update. I think Nate, I'm going to share my screen now. That's all right. And uh somebody can just say um, my screen is being shared. I will go back and uh.
You're all set, Bob.
Okay, great. Thank you. So uh before I get started with uh Steve Curry Board of Health, to just give our our almost now regular uh public health message and and COVID update to the school committee and community in general, uh I just want to share some late-breaking news um that was announced this afternoon by the uh Commissioner's Office. So first, um there has been some flexibility granted on the uh MCAS uh testing. First, the 11th graders will no longer need to participate in testing during the January, February window and testing for this class and English Language Arts and Math will be postponed until later in the year. So that's a little bit of uh relief and gives uh our staff and students some flexibility, given the uh, you know, the remote learning that we and many other districts uh have been um operating under. And then for the students in 12th grade, the students who are graduating uh in the spring uh as well as the test takers will remain eligible to participate uh in one or both tests beginning in January to earn their determination. And students already enrolled in, who were previously on track to graduate during this year, do not need to take tests. So again, the testing window for the eligible eligible students is extended through February 12th, uh giving our schools an additional week to complete the testing. Next up, just want to give um an update on access testing, which was part two of the announcement from uh the Commissioner's Office. And the window for access testing, uh which Eva Kelly has provided the results to the school committee on, uh has been extended now really from March 11th to May 20th. Uh March 11th was the most recent uh extended date and now uh as long as we administer the tests before May 20th, we're good to go. Uh the results will be returned to the districts in late summer and um students, schools may assess the students at any time during this window uh at our discretion, uh but results for all the students will be returned at the same time, regardless of when the tests are administered during the window. So I know Eva and the uh English Language Learner Teaching Staff and our principals uh are breathing a collective sigh of relief on the flexibility given by the uh Commissioner's Office on this. Next, uh as I have Eileen Spinney, our Technology Director here. Also just wanted to update the community on um a report that came out from Mass Inc. And really, it was the article in the report was a study of urban districts and how uh technology devices have been distributed uh to the student population as well as access. So Eileen, are you ready to join us?
Yes, thank you, Bob, and good evening, everyone. Um I'm very happy to uh have the opportunity to just briefly uh review where we are as far as our our current status uh in providing the most contemporary um access to our teachers, our students and our families, especially in this time of of need. Um so as you can see, um prior to the pandemic in March, um a pretty significant milestone, we had actually expanded our one-to-one uh Chromebook for our students in grades five through 12. But in addition to that, our K through four, actually pre K through four, um we have Chromebooks available for them in school at a rate of almost one-to-one. Couldn't quite get theirs, but we have at least one for every two students. In many cases, um we're in, we have better ratio than that. Uh now, as part of this pandemic, we've actually deployed over 4,800 Chromebooks to our students for use at home. And this is kind of a, an ongoing process because as you can imagine, there's there's maintenance and other types of considerations that have to occur when we've have our Chromebooks out um in the homes being used by by our students. So as far as our teacher access to digital resources, we have just now completed, oh, we haven't quite completed. We've um delivered 350 laptops, brand-new laptops to our teachers. We have 50 more to go for a total of 400. In addition to that, we're finally seeing some of our shortages or our um deliveries uh coming in so that we actually have document cameras that we're preparing now to get out to our teachers and um support staff, as well as we've just delivered um just under 100 presentation carts to be utilized by both our hybrid and our remote teachers. Uh as far as our family access, right now, we've distributed over 150 hotspots. These are used for my families for emergency internet access. And we are looking at um supporting all of this. IT has actually launched a new help desk that has a component for teachers, a component for students, as well as a component for families. So that, we're in the process of developing. We haven't reached our full potential on that yet. And in addition to that, as far as our digital literacy, we are looking that we've already completed over 400. And in addition to that, as far as our digital literacy, we are looking that we've already completed over four hundred unique sessions. Um, our teachers have actually completed uh, professional development sessions that the district IT, IT team working with John Thompson has put together. And we are, again, this is another ongoing kind of development because we are adding to that suite of PD as we, we've um, additional resources and, and allowing our, our teachers to be able to access that um, in real time. And if we could move to the next slide, this is what Bob had mentioned. We just recently reviewed a um, brief that Mass Inc. Innovation Institute came out within November, so this is very contemporary. And they took a look at providing digital equity, equity in Massachusetts Gateway Cities. So of the gateway cities, they actually featured thirteen and there are two particularly noteworthy um, pieces here. Fitchburg was one of three cities as far as the household share without internet service and we were at the the bottom of this list, which is exactly where we'd want to be. So as far as the thirteen cities, there were two others and we are at twenty percent of the amount of households without internet service. So you can see the hotspots that we are actually deploying or is allowing us to then address this need. Uh, and then also another note, notable, notable point. Fitchburg was again the lowest, so that's a good thing here, for the share of households without computers. So we were at twenty-five percent, but some of our, uh, the other gateway cities that were involved in this study, Lawrence, Springfield and Fall River are somewhere between thirty-seven and thirty-nine percent of households without computers. So Fitchburg, as far as this particular uh, study, uh, it's, as again, as I said, it's pretty noteworthy to see that we are on the bottom of the list, which again is actually a good thing. Happy to answer any questions, um, any thoughts? Um, and again, thank you for allowing this opportunity just to share.
Eileen, that Lawrence, Springfield and Fall River, the, the, it, do they account for the fact that they are much larger cities?
So that's why we're dealing with percentages. So when we have just the end, just the count, obviously the numbers are different, but, but so Springfield has um, I believe close to twenty-six thousand students, um, where we're at over five thousand. But as you can see, as far as the percentages go, that's kind of the way that we can really compare apples to apples, if you will.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, and I think just it's worthy, just uh, pointing out that I really uh, our ability to be in the lowest uh, in these two categories, which really is the highest, is just a longstanding uh, strategy, communication and finding funding for uh, devices over the past several years. Um, and we know when we're using school choice for a lot of these um, acquisitions and gradually we were expanding the grade level down from the high school. Uh, and then again, because of pandemic, uh, we've been making s- significant investments into our, our Chromebook. Uh, I guess inventory and distribution to our students, so. Um, what you're, what we're seeing now is, didn't happen overnight, uh, and it's been part of a long-term plan, so. Um, thank uh, Eileen and uh, Greg for just making it all come together and as long as the supply chain uh, delivers the was it a thousand uh, Chromebooks, Eileen, did they come in now?
Well, not quite yet, but we're very, well, I hope it's not a strategy, as you hear me say quite often. But we're seeing uh, the, the delivery uh, services reaching out to us to make sure that we have answered all of their questions. So yes, in fact, we do still have a supply chain issue. We are looking at um, at least a thousand home book devices yet to be delivered. Um, and I think their original delivery date was the end of September. So it's a little frustrating, but we're making very good use of the devices that we have. And yeah, a big plug for um, Superintendent Jokola and our business um, Director, Greg Shalafol, because they put this at the front of every of the, um, every discussion that we're having about meeting our students' needs. So that's very important and I have to say a shout out to my IT staff, I have a wonderful group of um, um, colleagues that work together very diligently to try and provide the best um, resources that we can for our kids.
Eileen, this is Jean, I have a question. Um, first of all, congratulations, I mean, I think this shows the hard work and foresight that you guys have had. Um, really ever since I've been on the committee, I mean, we've been moving one-to-one in school by school and grade by grade and so that's awesome. But um, wha- what about like daily connectivity issues? Like is, how, who, are, are, do those go to anybody at a central level? Are they just like going out to a teacher or are they going out to a principal? Like, do we have statistics about like daily, how many kids are just not able to get on?
So there are, there are a lot of variables there Jean, um, but we actually take a look at and we can see the traffic that we're having in a, at the district level, as well as school by school and even classroom by classroom. Um, to get down to the finest grain of which students are, we've been doing, oops, sorry, my Pandora's talking to me. Um, so we are looking at what we may have uh, for some some still connectivity issues. So we're working very closely with the teachers, with the building principals, uh, and actually our, our home liaisons and guidance people to really trying to make sure that we have our fingers on the pulse of, of what's happening with our families. And I think that's one of the biggest challenges that we do have is that there's a lot of, there are many, many changes that occur and many, many challenges that our families have. And this can happen in a week or in less than a week. So we, we see sometimes a very stable situation for a number of families and then all of a sudden, the, that stability has changed literally overnight. So uh, it's, it's a real team effort to make sure that we are trying to keep an eye on every single one of our kids. So I, I have to say that our building principals and their teams as far as reaching out and, and even our resource officers, um, ju- just last week, we had resource officers, officers coming over to central office to pick up Chromebooks for a few of the kids that all of a sudden had transportation issues and needed to have a replacement. So it's a pretty, pretty significant um, community effort as far as the schools.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Eileen or before we move on to the uh, just the metrics tracking of COVID and where we're at? Okay, hearing none, uh, we'll move on to the next phase. So every Thursday night now, the Department of Public Health publishes their latest weekly statistics, that's something that I track versus the, the daily numbers that are reported uh, either on the news or um, either the newspaper or on various news channels. So um, for the period ending December one, Fitchburg here um, had an average daily incident rate of forty-two point two individuals per one hundred thousand for the last fourteen days. And our percent positivity was seven point five three. And during that time period, another metric that I track is the number of tests performed. So we at, we were at three thousand nine hundred twenty tests performed during that uh, time period. And the change from the prior period was lower, so that was uh, trended in the, the right direction here, so um, let's see why my screen doesn't go down here. Just uh, reset it again. And again, the DPH puts out a color-coded map uh, showing um, various, the communities across the street based on their rating uh, scale of low, lowest, low being green, moderate being yellow, high being red. And I have a summary of that chart later on in this presentation, but you can see that the uh, Fitchburg, Leominster uh, twin cities are both classified as in the high risk based on the uh, last data, which was for through November twenty-eighth on this map. So as I mentioned earlier, just from the weekly report, going back to the beginning of uh, or middle of August, I've tracked the average daily incident rate. And the colors correspond, colors of the line correspond to the rating at the time. So as, as we can see, the uh, rating for Fitchburg uh, was largely in the green up until October twenty-one. Uh, October tw- or October fourteenth, it gradually increased into the yellow October twenty-one. And then it uh, increased after some spreader events in the community uh, after October twenty-one. And now for the second consecutive week, the average daily incident rate has decreased. Uh, it was in the mid-fifties, now I think we're at forty-two, um, as I mentioned earlier. And just some information that I track from that uh, weekly snapshot uh, the, using DPH statistics. Again, are the number of tests, which are the blue, the thin, actually purple line here that goes vertically, that's measured on the left X-axis. And then really the uh, line that goes from uh, August fifth uh, through time to the right. Uh, again, similar to the average daily incident rate where it goes from green to yellow to red. Uh, but you can see here that the, that line uh, which is the percent positive line uh, seems to have uh, flattened the curve, so to speak, over the last uh, couple of weeks after some dramatic uh, increases again that were uh, originated to the spreader events um, in the local area.
Bob, can you go back to that? I mean, so I'm just curious because there's um, numbers that the Board of Health puts out on Facebook that is dated for December seventh, right? Like so as of ten AM on Monday, December seventh, um, we had two hundred and eighty-five confirmed active cases. So I'm just curious, do you know, like your date is December second there?
Well, because these are, yeah, I could, well, uh, you're, you're
Well, my point, my point is that like we did just have, like I would think we're starting to see like Thanksgiving numbers? Kind of a, um.
I can comment on that Bob, if you'd like.
Yeah, actually, you know, Jean's actually one question ahead of where I'm at in the presentation, so if I can go to the next slide, then uh, I guess I'll start the answer that, but Steve, you can, you can answer it in a more detailed level. So in addition to the, a- all the foregoing charts, uh, Jean, were based on DPH um, data and the weekly reports, so that's where I get that information. Uh, this, this chart here uh, is based on um, local Board of Health uh, information and, you know, frankly, I, I get this from the uh, the social media posts from the Board of Health. So when they say that there's two hundred and eighty-eight cases on December seventh, that's, that's my data point. So every few days or however frequently, um, you know, Mr. Curry in the Board of Health posts a number is when I update my, this, this uh, trend. So uh, Steve, I don't know if you can, you know, maybe I can transfer it over to you now to try to answer Jean's question uh, more directly.
Sure, I, I, I think what's happening in the last week or two is it has become very difficult to get tested. And I think that's um, showing on the downward curve. I would love to say that, that we're going in the right direction, but I think it's really uh, testing sites not being available and tests not being available. Um, and now, now we have the uh, Thanksgiving holiday. Uh, and we are doing some testing, uh, Fitchburg and Leominster as well as Gardner. Uh, so the availability is getting a little better, so I think we're identifying cases once again, thus the spike again, to, starting today.
And I guess Steve, maybe to clarify, do the numbers that you posted today include the tests that were performed at Cogswell Park on Friday? And are those, these numbers just for Fitchburg residents?
These numbers are just for Fitchburg residents and yes, I believe we are starting to see some of the results of that testing from Friday. I think it'll probably even be a little bit more active in the next day or so.
So again, here's just the uh, the latest uh, which really is now a month old uh, of the community metric system, but I just keep including this more for posterity than anything. Um, again, together we can stop or slow the spread of COVID nineteen, uh, washing our hands, wearing masks, socially distancing. Um, you know, I think just from articles I've seen and uh, things actually that have been put out by the Department of Public Health. Uh, you know, the, the number one spreading event has been people gathering in homes. Um, I think, you know, one day there were twenty-six hundred cases attributed to home, home events and only a hundred twenty-two restaurants. Um, that was, you know, one day's, you know, data that was announced on the news. Um, so I, I, you know, going into the holiday season here, or continuing the holiday season here, uh, I would just a- ask, you know, parents, students, uh, community members to stay vigilant. Uh, I acknowledge and everyone knows it's been nine months um, that we've all been in this. Uh, we have a few months more to go uh, until, you know, virus availability uh, gets uh, distributed. Um, but you know, until then, I just want to uh, announce um, with the school committee and to the public that uh, at the end of this week uh, we'll be the recipient uh, through the Department of Ed and Massachusetts MEMA. Um, we'll be receiving of over five thousand cloth masks um, that our, you know, staff will be picking up in Worcester. Uh, these three ply hundred cent cotton jersey masks comes in, wears nose and mouth guard and goes beyond the standard cotton masks. Uh, this is in addition to the donation from um, AIS of masks uh, that we received uh, about a month or so ago. So we're uh, we're going to have some masks available for students and staffs uh, when they're scheduled to return to uh, our buildings on January fourth. Um, you know, as Mr. Curry was saying, um, just from a community uh, testing um, availability. Um, today there was testing in, in Gardner, I don't know where the location was Steve, perhaps you do? And then a- Athol is Wednesday and back Cogswell Park this Thursday from ten to four PM.
So the, if I might add, the Athol testing is at the Market Basket parking lot. And it's over
Behind City Hall.
Yeah, but that, that occurred today.
Yeah, oh, that's right, that's gone, okay.
And Steve, are you able to say how many people, you know, uh, were able to get tested at Cogswell or Doyle? You know, just from, you know, people turn on the news and they see in other communities that you know, X number of cars were able to be tested and some cases they've been able to turn away people. Can you tell uh, the committee, you know, how many people were tested and were any people turned away from being tested?
I don't know of anybody that was turned away for testing, um. The uh, somewhere between three and four hundred people are being tested um, at these sites. Um, so I think we're getting a uh, the availability back again to test. As like I said earlier, it's really been difficult to get a test. Which is really important to prevent the spread, obviously.
Well, you know, and I guess maybe that uh, brings my uh, our, our update on the uh, trends to a closure and, but I just want to tell the, the committee and the, you know, the public in general and and Pam Rivers is uh, is with us, but you know, we're um, planning on having some Biomax, um, the Abbott uh, testing capability um, for when we do return in um, January. And also the state is investigating uh, the possibility of some uh, cooled testing on a PCR testing. Um, there, it's still, I'll say maybe just a little bit beyond conceptual stages, so there's a lot of details that they're trying to work out. Uh, but that's something that uh, Desi is uh, looking into for uh, after the holidays. Jean?
So um, contrary to what it feels like, because I feel like I'm always the person kind of saying this stuff. I think we really need to talk about what we are thinking. Um, I think all of us were included on an email by a parent that was frustrated and seemed to suggest that it doesn't seem like we, we know our metrics or, not the metrics, like that we don't seem to have a system of making a decision about bringing children into school buildings and And I, I think it's important to say here that we've always been agreed about what the conditions are that we bring kids into classrooms. And, and I've got a student that I would love to see in a classroom, right? So this is like important that I feel like people talk about it genuinely. But if we're in a bad position right now, right, it's seven percent or higher positivity rate. And I, I just don't think people are going to do the right thing around holidays. Like I, from things that I have seen and people that I know. I mean, there was a lot of travel, like during Thanksgiving and getting together. And I, I don't mean to be the downer here, but I just think we have to think about it. Because of what that email said of that parent was that, is it, how likely is it that we're really going to keep January fourth, right after New Year's? I mean, I don't, I, I know you guys have done more than humanly possible to get everything ready, right? Like, but is it the situation where if we have a seven, maybe eight percent positivity rate, are we really going to go back on the fourth? And, and then one other thing I want to ask is if people have like listened or were heard or read about that Framingham superintendent saying that, that, that they have evidence that there is spread in their school. And what does that do to our understanding of, of the situation? And I don't know what the positivity rate is in Framingham. But I think cities, you know, cities are cities and there's more people and there's more. So it doesn't bring me joy to ask this, but I, I don't know. What are we all thinking about? Where the holidays are coming, we're not going to meet and we may be looking at a higher positivity rate. And it sounds, and parents are frustrated, right? Like I'm frustrated. I'm a parent and I'm frustrated. Like it just, but I, I guess I'm asking my fellow committee members, like what, what are you all thinking about this?
This is Jim. Again, I depend on the experts, Mr. Curry and Ms. Rivers in terms of providing us with the necessary data to make decisions. And I think when the decision was made that said that we would return on January fourth, at, at that, at that time, that, to me, that made sense. We, we have to pick a date at some point to say when we're going to go back either to hybrid or hopefully someday to a full classroom. I, I don't think that it would be reasonable to say we're not going back and for the rest of the year. I, I think things change and I, just as it happened in the spring, we had dates district by district and by the state saying, things will go for two weeks, we're going to do this for another two weeks, we're going to do this. I think based on what we have access to and what the trends are, we pick a date and then based on what Superintendent Jokeler and the cabinet and the the health experts have done for us so far is that those dates get moved, they get changed. And I, I think that's the only thing that we can do right now. I, I, I don't think it would be good to just say May first. I think that's too far out to determine what's going to happen. And I think the January fourth, and correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent Jokeler, January fourth isn't cast in stone. That date could definitely change. But it's a date that we needed to set to plan appropriately. And if things get better, then we can go back. If they don't, that date will probably be extended to a, another time. Thank you.
I just want to. Parents, are parents, are they taking a flexible approach to this? How much notice? I'm sure the more the better, but would you, would we require? If what, as, as Jim mentions, you know, that's not a hard and fast date. I mean, we've moved, God knows we've moved dates in the past. But how, how much time is, is enough for a parent where you can say to them on, on December twenty sixth or something, we're not going back on the fourth. Is that enough time for them? I don't know, you know?
I think that's the right question to ask.
Yeah.
I think that's the right question to ask.
Yeah, I mean, because I think that's a reality. I mean, we've moved the dates before. If the numbers don't change significantly, if we don't flatten out or, or go in a downward trend. I mean, we, you know, we'll have to discuss it at that point, but not be unheard of that we move that date once again.
And especially thinking that that date is going to be only weeks after, you know, Christmas and more, you know, more holidays, more people traveling. I don't think it's like ridiculous to say that that might change. And I guess just want to thank Gene for asking the question too and bringing up this conversation because it's a hard one to have. And just, I don't know, thank you for taking the gauntlet and bringing this up. But I am also with Jim. I think we should just defer to the experts on this for the most part. But I also think of the parents and I don't think that, I think the more heads up we can give them, the better. And that's hard, but right now it's looking like the trend is looking worse and worse. And with the more holidays coming up, it seems I would not be surprised at all. And I don't know if I should say it. It seems likely that, that dates probably got to get moved. If the similar spike that happened after Thanksgiving happens after Christmas, I don't, I don't think it would be surprising to anyone that we're not in a place to go back to school.
Well, you know, I don't want to put another twist on the whole thing too, though, but we're, we're really, I, I don't know what the long term damage is going to be to these young people.
Yeah.
By not being in school, I, I that, that is a real concern.
Intangible.
Yeah, kids, they need to be back in school, but I don't know.
I.
After you, Sally, go ahead.
Okay, so, wearing is caring. Great slogan. I love it. I have a mask that says that with the Red Raider logo. And Dr. Fauci said not long ago, close the bars, open the schools. We are at a disadvantage because at a federal level, there is not one coherent message. And there will not be one until the transition. In the interim, what can we do, and by we, I mean, school committee and Fitchburg Public Schools and the city of Fitchburg, to really bring home that message of social distancing, mask wearing, the rest of it? I know we're doing a lot. I know we do this every day and every week, but we've, we've had these eruptions of, of contagion. Really emerging from adult, kind of adult oriented, adult oriented activities as well as the occasional after school children's activity. So I'll, I'll, I'll just, you know, what billboard can we buy to say, you know, get through the holidays on your own, you know? Think of the kids, let's get our kids back to school in January. Let's really, you know, if you have not been wearing a mask or if you have not been laundering your mask, you know, there's that too. I know that certainly is the case with, with some folks. The, you know, the wearing of gloves at Market Basket. I'm about to start wearing rubber gloves when I go shopping. And I, I just, it just seems like that, that, you know, that the, the big message to, to everyone is let's get our kids back to school January fourth. We're going to do our best, but we need the cooperation of the adults. Because I think, I think the kids are with us, but I don't necessarily know about adults, especially where there are adult activities that are still happening. You know, including the visiting. I know lots of, I, I talked to a lot of parents and it's very casual for them. Oh yeah, we're, we're going down to see this person and that person. And it's like, what are we doing? What, what aren't we doing? And I'm, I'm, anyway, I, I, I'd rather have some hopeful, you know, something to share. But it just, you know, the wearing is caring on a billboard. That's the image I have right now. To get our kids back to school January fourth.
Well, I remember when we, when we first started talking about this, right? We said that there had to be the PPE and everybody, you guys, the school system got that, right? You guys were incredibly getting that. There had to be the social distance and hybrid, where like enough kids out of the mix to make sure you could get the six foot distance. And we, we can do that, right? We can do that. And, but the third rung of that, right, was the positivity rate. And like, I am not the expert. I am only saying that we at that point said five percent. Like we, like that was like what the CDC was saying or the World Health Organization was saying. Like if you get beyond five percent, then you're in trouble. And we were, back then, we were like really low and it was nowhere near five percent. And now we're at seven something percent. So I guess I just want to know as a committee, because we're going to be in the middle of holidays, you guys. We're not going to be meeting, right? Like, and, and it's, I guess I just want to know if we, what we think about that. And, and I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know. It's just that for me, there were always like those three kind of pillars, right? We had the PPE and then the social distance, which includes all the ventilation stuff and filters that you guys have gotten. But then there was the rate. So I, I don't know. Can we go back with two of those in place and the rate is really high and we're not going to have a problem? I, I, I mean, I'm teaching right now and I, I've got like lots of people keeping their kids home. Like they're not even sending their kids, right? So we're there, we're teaching and there's, a lot of the people who could send their kids are not even sending their kids because the rates are high where I'm teaching. So it's just, but it's nowhere near seven percent.
You know, I, if I could, Bob, if I could say, I, as you know, I'm Chair of the CAPS Collaborative. We have a hundred and forty students. We have been going to school since July, summer school. And we have, right up to now, we have had one COVID case this past week. And our kids have been going, a hundred and forty kids. Teachers are doing something right. We've had some teachers who, and staff who have had to quarantine and we've had to fill in some substitutes, make a few changes. But the collaborative is made up of Fitchburg, Leamester, Gardner, eleven cities and towns and some students that we take in from our districts. And we are continuing and we're doing well. And teachers are doing a great job. The staff is doing a great job. And these are all special needs kids. And I, I won't even tell you the exact number, but we have friends. And we've been going and we've been doing very well. And I'm, I would like to see us kids get back in school and just deal with what's happening. Because we have many students who are home right now, who are very depressed. And they need to get back into school. We don't talk about some of the depression that's taking place. But it's, there are things going on. We need to get our kids back and deal with what happens. We can't worry about what may happen all the time. But we need to get our kids starting back. That's how I feel.
I just want to throw in a, a thought, which is this. I do have friends in other districts and I'm wondering whether grownups in, grownups who know that their kids are going to be home are, are being less careful, careful about exposure. My family is like super, we only get more uptight about it. We're, we don't get, we're not easing up at all. Let's put it that way. But I wonder whether because we've had these, you know, different spikes with adult environments, whether the fact that our kids, if our kids were in school, would that cause a psychological shift for adults to, if they have not been taking things seriously, to take things more seriously? And I, I, you know, a friend of my daughter's, you know, she was thrown out of Walmart because she didn't want to wear a mask. I mean, she felt it was going against her civil rights. Like, so there's still some of this mentality that's out there. I, I, I agree with Pete. I think a hundred and forty kids at CAPS since July is gold medal award winning and inspiring. I, I'm, I'm really encouraged by that statistic. So I, I am in accord with January fourth. Anyway, I'll, I'll be done. Thanks.
Steve, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
The seven percent rate, is there any breakdown in age?
Sure. Right now, the number one age group for positive cases is twenty to twenty nine. And then the second group is the school age.
Well, what school age? We go pre-kindergarten up to.
By five to nineteen years old. So the second group is the actual school age kids, five to nineteen, second highest.
But no breakdown there? No, no breakdown? A five year old is very different from a nineteen year old.
Correct. I, I, I don't have that number in front of me, but I don't know if it's available. I can certainly look into it.
Yeah.
Can also tell you folks that I, since the inception of COVID, COVID, I know of no school outbreak. I know of COVID in some of our schools, but none of them have been caused by the school itself. Or the school hasn't been a contributor to the spread. So just, I think that's an important fact you should know.
Steve, could I ask you, have you heard about that report from Framingham? Have you heard about that Framingham superintendent's claim that there was school spread there?
I have not. But I do have a concern that if a school does become a spreader, then you know, how, how folks feel about that and sending your kids to school. But I know the schools that are still in class, in person classes are doing quite well. They have had no cases. And if they've had a case, they're, they're way ahead and they know what their students are doing and what activities they're participating in. Takes, takes a lot of work. The smaller schools are able to do that.
Yes. So I guess maybe just to build off some of the comments from Mr. Curry. You know, we do have a folk tech school in Fitchburg right now that is open for hybrid as well as two parochial schools, which are smaller, as Mr. Curry mentioned. But there is a folk tech high school with fourteen hundred students that has seven hundred students coming in on a hybrid model every day. You know, one thing I've said to the committee is we have to look at the totality of the situation. And there are metrics and there is information coming out almost every day, sometimes a couple of times a day. I can tell you that the commissioner and the Board of Ed are looking at ways to increase testing. As I mentioned earlier, they're looking at ways to implement that in January to get students back. Specifically around the elementary age of students. Where the spread by elementary age students, I don't know if it's non-existent, but I don't know if there's been any cases documented in that. Clearly there are issues or concerns with high school students who are more mobile and more social. And I think we've all seen the stories of certain, how certain high schools have been closed down for a period of time after, you know, fifty people met in the woods or fifty or, you know, more people met in somebody's house at a party. You know, again, this is a situation that as school committee members or as educators in the district, we're learning as we go along. You know, we go by, we make the best possible decision for our students and staff, considering the totality of the situation. You know, I think as Mr. Stevens mentioned, you know, one of the concerns that we hear are the social, emotional, mental health needs and concerns of our students. You know, this, this is, it's been nine months since many of our students have set foot in our buildings. That's a long time. It's having an impact. So again, and when we made the decision in the middle of November, after Mr. Curry convened a meeting with, you know, people from the school department, local mayors or town managers, we made the decision based on his advice to extend. to extend the, uh, remote learning and really also to provide some consistency through the end of the, the calendar year, given that we would be coming up on Thanksgiving. And let's see what human behavior actually happens. You know, we're seeing just based on Mr. Curry's information, uh, an increase. Every Thursday night at five o'clock, I'm looking at the information from the, the state and updating my charts and sending it out to our team. You know, these are difficult decisions because, um, there are many parents who, um, who want, need, and are kids to come back to school. So that's something that, um, I think our team has been trying to advocate for and to try to do it when we're, when, you know, when it's as safe as possible. And we have, uh, you know, as Jean, as, as you mentioned, we have the P P E all in place, the air purifiers, uh, in place. We're ready. We're getting masks donated from either private entities or from, uh, from this, from Vima. We're ready. So we're looking forward to July, uh, January fourth. You know, one thing I've said in the beginning is we all have to be flexible and adaptable. So, you know, the, although we don't have another meeting scheduled for this, uh, month, uh, we could always schedule another meeting, um, you know, if necessary. So just because there isn't another school committee meeting scheduled on the schedule, that doesn't mean that we can't have one, uh, if we were to make any, any decision.
I, I think we should have one. I think we really need to see what happens with data from holidays and Bob, can you just tell me when the semester ends? Because January fourth isn't the end of the semester, right? It's usually around Martin Luther King Day. Is that right?
Um, John, do you have the, like, the ending date on the semester?
Give me, uh, one second. Give me one second. I want to make sure I get you the right date.
I mean, maybe the schools are all, are all the schools different? Like, do they all have different ending of quarters and stuff?
The high school's on, uh, terms and everyone else is on trimesters, so it's going to be a bit different, I believe.
Okay. I appreciate everything you said, Bob. I do think that we probably are going to have to revisit this and just kind of, um, take a vote. Because I think personally, if I think we're above five percent, I don't think it's a good idea to be going.
Yeah, so I, again, I, I, I think, and, and I would say this based on other districts, uh, uh, there have been districts that operated in a hybrid model, uh, above five percent and up until about, you know, over five percent for, for many weeks. Uh, so I, I don't, I don't think we should, if, I don't know if that's the right metric to focus on.
Jean, just to let you know, the semester for the high school ends on January twenty-ninth semester too. Um, uh, all the other schools actually ended last Friday. They're on trimesters.
Okay, thank you.
And that really wouldn't affect the gr- uh, any grading because high school students might be switching teachers or classes.
Correct.
Thank you.
What's next, Bob?
Okay, uh, moving on. Well, uh, we have Craig Antassi, Athletic Director, to talk about winter sports. And I think he has, uh, a presentation he wants to share.
I do. Thank you, Bob. Well, that was quite the opener. Thank you, everyone. Um, let's try to bring some levity here. So I'm gonna, um, share my screen here in a moment. And actually, in listening to the conversation, I actually adapted the order of the slides just slightly to make them more pertinent to what we are kind of going to see. I believe everybody should be seeing my screen right now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much, Rosemary. So, once again, thanks for allowing me to come in and speak to you all. I'm here today to ask for your approval and support to run a winter athletic program here for, um, the Fitchburg Public Schools. Uh, and in this winter, it'd be limited to the high school alone. Uh, we would offer no middle school athletics this winter. So that means no middle school basketball. So I told you I had kind of adapted the, the slideshow just slightly because I want you all to understand that our students are being monitored in athletics to a degree that no other young person in the city really is. I'm going to move forward just one slide because I want you to see this. I grabbed this slide from, uh, Superintendent Jokel's presentation because you can see that green line trends for a number of weeks along and then moves upward sharply on the twenty-first of October. Now, our student athletes up until that point were engaged in really two, uh, information management systems and were being tracked daily. The first one was our family ID system, which our coaches use. It's a cloud-based platform. It contains all of the students' information, their emergency information, uh, parental contacts, allergy, uh, allergies, uh, you name it, it's in there. Um, every single day, our coaches are forced, well, shouldn't be forced, that's probably the wrong word, are asked very politely, but it, it's a strong urge to take attendance. And that's what you're seeing on the left two slides. So you can see girls soccer, you can see each attendance date from October twenty-third down to October ninth that those, that that team met. Um, weekends happened in the middle and there were some missed practice days due to rain. But you can see that attendance logs were kept for each one of those dates. The second little rectangle there is actually showing part of the girls soccer roster, which is public. And you can see the green checks mean that the student was present at that day of practice or, or competition. And the red X means that that student was absent. If that student is absent, down in the lower right-hand corner, you see the message box. Our coach will click the message box and the parental guardian is going to get an email indicating that that student's been absent for the day. In conjunction with Family ID, which is giving us an accurate attendance log every day, we've contracted with Sway Medical for traumatic brain injury, um, prevention services, where we're doing concussion baseline testing for all of our student athletes. And as part of that service, Sway Medical is offering, offering COVID screening daily to each of our student athletes. So to the right, all the way to the right, you see on my phone, um, a screenshot from my phone, which is showing a sway alert. Now, what happens every day is a student gets a little ping on their phone that says you have a job to do. That student is asked to go in and answer the questions in this COVID screening. Um, you're seeing actually a dated image of the COVID screening questions. There are actually more questions attached to it now. This was an early, uh, a preliminary one before they were testing for, uh, contacts, close contacts of COVID nineteen. They've since updated. Student athlete is asked to answer honestly each one of these questions for all of the symptoms. If they skip any one of these symptoms, they flag. The account is flagged and you can see all the way to the right. The administrators on the account then get a sway alert. So I get an alert on my phone that says one of the student athletes has flagged for some reason. Now, again, a student athlete will flag if they skip any question. So you can see here, this student athlete has skipped taking their temperature. And because of that, now the administrators have this student on their radar. This administrative flag goes to the head coach of the team, the assistant coaches of the team, myself, the Athletic Director, as well as, um, the staff E M T trainer, Alan Toomley, who's our COVID coach. At that point, Mr. Toomley then reaches out to the coaching staff and the student athlete to see what's going on. If it was a fat finger mistake, let's say they skipped a question by accident, uh, made a mistake in answering the question, Alan then clears the account, the student goes back in, corrects their error, and the flag is removed, the student receives a green light to practice. If the student is symptomatic, the student is screened out and is not allowed to attend practice. In practice, the policy is a student athlete is not allowed to attend a practice or game, meaning arrive at a facility without filling in this squ- this sway, um, pre-screening. Now, I bring this up to you to kind of give you a, an idea for the level of monitoring that's going on for our student athletes. And I grabbed this slide from Superintendent Jokela because I know that, um, Mr. Curry is on the phone here. And, and when that date came on the October twenty-first that we started to see a spike in the city, I think that Mr. Curry, uh, Steve would agree that the information that was actually provided relative to our student athletes was very helpful. And we were actually on top of many of these close contacts way before they had a chance to spread in our community as it's, at least as it pertains to the athletic department. So I wanted to bring this up as kind of a backdrop to what I'm going to present going forward. Because what I present going forward is really just asking you for the, uh, the opportunity to run an athletic program this winter. But the backdrop for it all is this fact that we have done an exceptional job, I feel, at providing the safest possible environment for our student athletes to participate in. Now, I find it to be a great success what we've been managed to offer to this point. It was cut short in the fall because of that spiking line. But again, we made the collective decision as a district to pull back from the offering of athletics in order to aid, um, the Board of Health and the City of Fitchburg in their efforts to, um, you know, really kind of flatten that curve or get a, get a grip on, on the spread in the community. Could we have finished the season potentially? There was a potential that we could have done so. Would there have potentially been, uh, outside vectors that have broadened it, um, these COVID contacts from the outside? Yes, but we'll, we'll never know. At the time, you made the best decision possible for us, but I have to stress to you, I have full confidence that the program that we were running was the safest possible way for students to engage in extracurricular activities. So with that being the backdrop from the last presentation, I told you that there are a number of organizations that kind of govern this. And, and the main one is the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and they updated their guidance on November seventh. When they updated their guidance on November seventh, they reclassified, well, they gave some additional guidance for the asterisk sport offerings at the bottom of basketball and ice hockey, which fell under the higher risk category of sports to be offered. What you see here, for examples, are the possible, um, activities that as an athletic department that we could offer to our student athletes, depending upon, um, you know, the discussion that we just had with student athletes in the building, we may have more availability to use our weight room for non-contact exercise classes or our large field house for some of these indoor conditioning, uh, activities. Uh, track and field is still up for discussion right now. Um, but this, the focus of this presentation is basketball and ice hockey. Now, basketball and ice hockey were qualified as higher risk down in that red category at the bottom. And way back in August, they said the only way that a higher risk sport could rise to level two or three play, and I'll tell you what that is in a second, would be if minimum mandatory standards for modification to play were met. In the fall, there was no chance that basketball or ice hockey could run as a school-sponsored sport. The E E A did not feel that we could offer that sport at that time. Since then, they have made an update to the guidance, a key update to the guidance, where they have cleared basketball and ice hockey for level three play, which means competitions that are interscholastic, right? We can actually play other schools in basketball and hockey. But again, this is not without minimum modifications that need to be met. Okay? Now, there's a point of emphasis I would like to make here. And this kind of goes right on with the conversation that we were just having. Desi put out in August that they believe that sports can be an important part of the well-rounded educational experience, even during this public health crisis. And right now, sports are important to not only our youth, but our adult staff as well. There is so much loss that really our city and, and really the world is grappling with, with right now. So much normalcy has fallen to the wayside. People are lost and struggling. And these types of interpersonal connections that are available through athletics, through our athletic program, are really kind of unique. Classrooms are amazing and boy, as a parent in the city of Fitchburg, I want my kids back in school. But as the Athletic Director for the city of Fitchburg, I also understand, and I hope that I can convey to you the importance that a coach has in a student athlete's life and vice versa. There are long-term lessons that are taught daily on our courts and on our fields. So I put this in as a point of emphasis because again, I'm asking you for the permission to pursue two indoor athletic activities this winter. The two activities that we're looking to, again, participate in would be basketball and ice hockey. And just as a refresher, the win- the traditional three athletic seasons have been broken into four seasons now with a floating catch-all season that has collected any sport that's been displaced because the E E A has not deemed it safe to run at this moment. So you can see the winter season is December fourteenth to February twenty-first. So we're actually looking to begin next Monday with tryouts for these two sports. The District Three Athletic Committee, along with the Midland-Motuset League, has developed a geographic pod model, which we used in the fall to limit the number of interactions that any district would have with the surrounding state. In our pod proposed for basketball, I've listed the six schools, right, that right now, again, it's proposed because each one of these school districts has to opt in. You can see we have Gardner, Lemmister, Fitchburg, Narragansett, Quabon, and, and Oakmont. Where it's, it's a North County pod. It's very similar to our fall pod. Uh, the only addition is Lemmister High School, which is a natural fit for us. It's a rivalry game and they're very similar to us right now from a COVID standpoint. Our proposed ice hockey pod is slightly larger. This pod was developed because all of these teams play out of the Wallace Civic Center. These ice hockey pods were developed so students would not have to travel. We're very lucky in Fitchburg that the Wallace is here, so our students can arrive at the facility and leave. Okay? Now, there are some basic guidelines that have come out from the, um, District Three Athletic Committee in conjunction with the Midland-Motuset League. In fact, I wrote a number of these guidelines. This is a very comprehensive document that really governs what we're trying to accomplish. Um, again, it's kind of a soup-to-nuts document from, um, transportation through, you know, how teams may shoot, again, under normal circumstances, shake hands, but now where there would be a non-contact show of sportsmanship. I pulled out some selected pieces so we could kind of review them. And then I'm going to open this up to, to your questions because I'm sure you have a lot. Our roster sizes, number one, have been limited. In boys and girls basketball, we can only have twelve players. In a normal year, that could extend up to fifteen players with many coaches on the bench. In a sport like basketball, we may even swing athletes from JV up to varsity. In this case here, with an indoor sport going on, we are really trying to operate a co-horted model. So there will be no use of swing players and the roster sizes will be tightly enforced. In the case of ice hockey, you can see that there, we're allowing no more than twenty-five on the practice ice at a time, but the game day rosters are twenty. The reason for twenty on the game day roster is there is no use of locker room facilities at the Wallace Civic Center. Ice hockey players will show up dressed in their full uniforms, carrying their gloves, their helmets, their stick and their skates. They'll walk in, they'll put their skates on in the bleachers and then they will immediately, you know, enter onto the ice. There'll be no locker room facility available for them. So those are really tight roster sizes. As far as sub-varsity teams go, right now, we would plan on offering our sub-varsity, um, teams, again, in basketball, following that strict roster size. These, um, these guidelines are consistent across District Three, which is all of central Massachusetts. These um, these guidelines are consistent across District Three, which is all of Central Massachusetts. Now, from a game day management perspective, transportation is probably the first, is probably one of my largest concerns, right? So here, all of Desi's guidelines will be followed. Again, we spec out the use of seventy-seven passenger buses, but in talking with first student, I always request the largest bus side po- bus size possible, which is actually an eighty-four passenger bus to give us a little bit extra space. On a seventy-seven passenger bus, that'll give you twenty-three seats. Um given that our roster sizes are only twelve, we would have plenty of space on the bus, even though the windows potentially would have to be in more of a closed setting, right, because it's cold outside. The schedules are hoping to be developed, so we'll only need one to three buses per day, depending upon if we offer three levels of basketball. Okay, again, in the case of hockey, we would offer no transportation. Students would just arrive to the rink themselves. Um in an ordinary year, Monty Tech, our co-op school, would provide the transportation. Now, in order to run this safely indoors, we're supposed to have different entrances for both teams, both the visiting team and the home team. At our facility, we're quite lucky. Um, we have that massive fieldhouse with multiple entrances into the fieldhouse. Our home team will be asked to park in the rear of the building and will enter through the back door um where uh traditionally, our teams would enter the locker room areas. Our visiting teams would enter through the front doors, and the visiting team buses would park out front. When the the visiting team arrives, you can see in the picture on the left, our COVID task force at the building has set up these lanes of hand sanitizer when students start to enter the building on January fourth. We'll direct our visiting teams through this same trafficked area. Uh we'll also use some white stanchions and rope to create one-way alleys to go um so students are not able to, or visiting students and staff are not able to move freely within the building. They'll be directed immediately into the fieldhouse. On the right side, there's a small door in the rear of the building. Our home team students, our Pittsburgh Red Raiders, will move through that small door into the rear of the fieldhouse. What's important to note here, and I'm gonna skip forward a little bit, is our fieldhouse is vast. This picture is taken from the balcony outside my office. When you look down onto the floor, on the left side of the screen is the home team side. That's access from the rear of the building. You can imagine the center line in the court is the dividing line. The only time student athletes had to cross the center line is when they are actually playing on the day of competition. We can consider that like a demilitarized zone. No visiting team or home team player will move across that line at any point, and we've separated the entrance and equi- the entrance and egress points, so they'll have no reason to um uh overlap in an unnecessary way. You can see the bench areas that I have kind of spaced out here. Um, we're using the NBA model. There are six feet between each chair as two rows deep. You might be wondering why the bleachers are pulled out so close. Um, we pulled the bleachers out this morning and just a a trick of the bleachers in order to put them back in and only pull them out partial way, in order to pull them out a partial distance, I would have had to put them all the way back in and then pull them back out, so they're actually a little bit further out than they'll be normally. As a game day, as a facility operator, we have to provide space for students to come off the floor and breathe heavily if they need a mask break. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna provide a large area, the track space for students to go and cool down if they come off the floor and they are breathing heavy. Each one of those seats is individually assigned to a student. That'll be their seat throughout the entire year. Between games, all um high-touch surfaces will be fogged um by myself or the custodial staff or or Mr. Tombly. Um the entire facility will be clean between each game. And I realize I'm kind of brushing over the top of this, and I'm happy to answer questions. Um I'm just really sensitive to everyone's time now, and I feel as though I've already gone a little long. Here are a few points, points of emphasis. Um as far as sports-specific modifications. For basketball and hockey, it must be stated that every single student athlete will be required to wear a mask at all times. In the fall, I watched field hockey players in a seven-v-seven game sprint the length of the field repeatedly, wearing their masks. If field hockey players can run one hundred yard sprints repeatedly while wearing masks and soccer players do the same, then I think it's fair to ask our basketball and hockey players to wear their mask while playing on the floor. This is a non-negotiable from the MIA. For basketball, there's gonna be no jump ball. So a traditional game starts with a jump ball at center court. Now, there will be an inbound from center court, um depending upon, I believe it's an initial coin flip. The second point of emphasis is really um strict enforcement of the closely guarded five seconds rule. Which means when a player is dribbling the basketball, typically they're able to dribble it and the defense, the defending player can come up tight to their body. And they've got five seconds to either make a move to the hoop or make a pass. We don't want unintended contact, really tight contact like that, so that rule is going to be enforced strictly. In fact, we're really going to emphasize moving the ball from player to player and not hold the ball. Referees will call this. It'll be an immediate whistle and a turnover, so um all of our student athletes will be taught that it that that's something that they really need to be aware of if they're gonna play this game. It'll look a little different from traditional basketball. Freedom of movement will be strictly enforced, meaning unlike in traditional basketball where there's a lot of picks going on, where you're trying to obstruct the movement of an offensive or defensive player, we're looking to play a more open game. Um if there's any type of uh obstruction to the movement of the player, referee's gonna blow a whistle, it'll be a turnover. In a free throw setting, if there is no chance for a rebound and continued play, the lane, the key, will be cleared of all players. Only the person taking the free throw will be there to take his shot, his or her shot. In the case of a rebound, instead of five possible players underneath the hoop, they will only have four possible players, and those players will only be asked to move in just before the shot. If there's any tie-up with a ball, there will be a quick whistle. There will be no wrestling for the ball on the floor. An immediate jump ball will be whistled, but because there's no jump balls, the ball will then turn to a possession change and an inbound from the side court. In the event of an inbound from the side court, the opposing player is gonna be asked to maintain six feet of distance. They will not be able to closely guard and obstruct the inbound pass. So this is gonna look a little different straight across the board. Because of all the anticipated whistles, there will be no halftime. Instead, there's going to be a hundred-and-fifty-second break between all quarters, which is about two and a half minutes. Okay? Hockey is a tricky game. Um there are very few modifications for play in hockey. Hockey, when played well, is a fast game, right? Players are moving across the ice um in a really beautiful fashion. In order to play more of a European-style hockey, they're eliminating third-party scrums along the boards. If two players move into the boards for a puck, that is fine. They're able to struggle for the puck productively. Once a third player unnecessarily comes in to force the action, a whistle is blown and and um a face-off is given. Officials will also stop play if scrum evolves on any part of the ice that lasts longer from five seconds, and that would be in front of the net. If you've ever seen the sport of hockey, sometimes you have many bodies in front of the net. If they find that it's an unsafe environment in front of the net, a whistle will immediately be blown. What I can say with definitive, wha- what I can say definitively is that the sports-specific modifications for an MIA sponsored sport are above and beyond the restrictions that would be put on any local sport activity or any youth league that may participate. We are by far the most highly regulated sport um uh agency right now that that our student athletes could participate with. So here are just some parent and player informational meetings, again, to go over all of these things, given that you see fit to offer your support for winter athletics in this um, you know, as we kind of face down the holiday season. So with that, I'm gonna stop sharing and I'm gonna answer questions because that is, I think, where where we need to go with this right now. So I'll open the floor.
Craig?
Yes, Rosemary.
Uh I'm impressed and grateful for all your efforts and everybody's efforts. And it sounds, sounds excellent to me, and and even I can see some uh good things from these different um criteria that you put in, say, basketball, things like that. Yeah, very, very good. I'm with you.
Thank you.
Craig, do you know if people, kids who would be on a team, uh say, a basketball team or the hockey team, are also on like other travel or like so is is there, is there involvement in that sport limited to the school's sanction?
So we can only control what we can control, Jean. The MIA has a bona fide team-player rule in effect that says that a student athlete must participate for the high school team first, right? And only can participate in one activity a day. Um
Well, so some of the, some of the outbreaks this year were youth hockey, right?
Sure.
So are we saying, so are the kids who are playing on the high school team playing in some of these places that did have more outbreaks?
So, it's a great question. Honestly, that is a great question, Jean. As part of the informational meetings that we, that again, are being planned currently, what will be asked of all of our student athletes as a condition of participating will be that they limit their their sport participation to our high school programs in order to create a bubble, right, to avoid any outside vectors coming in to our teams. Now, can we control it entirely? The answer is unfortunately, no. All we can do is ask. It is a parental decision and is a family decision. So we're gonna be very open and honest that any type of interaction outside of what we're offering could put in jeopardy the team's season. So each one of those parents, players, and families will have to ask themselves how important this is to them. Right? And I do understand your question. Can can we limit it? The answer is it it'd be very difficult to do so. That conversation came up at the state level and they thought that it 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 was a non-starter because it was almost impossible to create that type of limit in a short time. There's much, there's a lot of pushback in the community. There's a lot of pushback in in these various sport communities, even on wearing masks. So um you know, I think that we're starting to understand the importance of doing the right things, but this is an ongoing discussion that that we're having. Um and that's probably the first discussion that will be had at any one of these parent-player meetings, is the need to commit to that team, our team, over the course of the next couple of months in order to maintain the integrity of our bubble.
Craig, this is Jim Walsh. Thank you very much for trying to compress as much information as you have for us to see. Um I I just have a couple of comments and I'm I'm kind of torn here. Um the slide that you showed us about MIA saying sports can be an integral part of a a student's education, and I agree with that, but I think, I think that's a very limiting statement. I think any extracurricular activity can do that, and that includes band, it includes student government, the chess club, all those things, and and I wish that what you're able to do for athletics could also be done for all those other extracurricular activities for students who aren't, who aren't athletes and and that I'm torn that way. The other thing that I'm torn with is um, right now, we're in remote learning and will be that way as we discussed earlier, until January fourth. And and I find a um, and I don't know if there's an irony, but the fact that we decided that it's not safe for students to be in school in the classroom yet, they'll be together practicing and playing when they can't be in the classroom learning. And 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 that's something I'm, I'm having a problem with trying to balance out here. And I, and I I know that sports is a good outlet for students. At the same time, it's kind of a conflict that we don't want students in the classroom to learn, but it's okay to begin practicing in sports, so I'm, I just throw that out there as my, as my concern.
Yeah, Jim, can I respond to that? So
Yes, yes, really.
So I'm gonna, twofold. First, I'm gonna take your first piece here. I see athletics as being, hopefully, the first and approving ground to create the opportunity for our extracurriculars that are not athletics to begin to meet again, because I'll tell you what, I saw the band, a few of our our band members playing at the Thanksgiving car parade, and that was amazing, right? To see the smiles on their faces. I don't think that they've gotten together like that in a long time. They were distanced. Everything was safe, but that's, you're absolutely right. All of these events that provide worth to our, to our students are important. And then to build on that, what I'm asking, we're hoping to start our tryouts on Monday, the fourteenth. But we won't play games until after the January fourth deadline has come and gone. This gives us an opportunity to begin to build the bridge as we hope to enter this building again with our students in the beginning part of January. And that's kind of what I'm proposing today is, at some point, we have to begin building that bridge of back to normalcy. Right? That bridge to a, to having something from where we are now, where we've lost everything. And and this is, again, does it make me nervous? Yeah, it makes, I think, everyone nervous. But there's so much on the line here, and and the social and emotional health of our students, staff, and our community are so important that I know from an athletic standpoint, athletics just happens to mean a lot to a lot of people for various reasons. And this is something that I I think could be a key foundation, could be a keystone in building that bridge, you know, from where we are now to where we want to get to.
Alright, thank you, Craig. And also, I think the last time you spoke to us, there would be no fans at any basketball or hockey games, is that correct? It would just be the teams playing.
So District Three has come down and made their decision in Central Mass. There will be no fans. Um, that was a collective decision that was made.
Thank you. Thank you, Craig. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Can I ask, Craig?
Please.
Well, how in any of the conversations and the um negotiations that people have been at, how how is it that football, where it's outside, I mean, basketball has a lot of contact, right? And hockey has a lot of contact. Um and they're inside. I I guess I really, it was, it was a bit of a surprise to me when I saw the approval come through that, you know, sports could be offered and school committees could vote on it. Um because I I I guess I really need to understand the science of that, Craig, like I I I hear, I, you're talking in the end about, what? Sixty kids? Is that what we're talking about here? Um
Twenty thirty-six. Yeah, you know, for actual FPS students, probably roughly sixty students.
And parental choices about whether they are going to do this and and these coaches are all volunteering, and so those are things that I feel like it has going for it, but I I really don't understand how people are saying it can be done safely when we aren't testing people.
So you raise a good point. Um and and I think that that's something that we're all grappling with, right? But all we can do is listen to the key decision-makers that are above me. And at the state level, our Sports Medicine Committee at the MIA has met and deemed it viable. Um, what I can say in hard data from here in Pittsburgh is that we have had zero like as far as Pittsburgh Athletics operating for five solid weeks while sending students to other schools, zero cases of student-to-student transmission. Right? What I can say, again, and I'm gonna stress this, and so I started with it, our monitoring for our student athletes is I would put it right up there with the best in the state. I mean, we truly are the best urban district in the state when it comes to the monitoring of our student athletes from a COVID-nineteen perspective. I mean, we truly are the best urban district in the state when it comes to the monitoring of our student athletes from a COVID-nineteen perspective. And that commitment to ensuring that safe environment has forced us to make some difficult decisions along the way. But I'll stand by each one of those decisions. And that's why, Gene, even given the background of what is going on in the world, I'm confident that we can provide an environment that in the event of the worst-case scenario, meaning someone is positive, that we would limit its effect, right? What I'm grappling with, and I think everyone here is grappling with, is to remove that possibility to say that we're not going to provide any sort of contact, right? Is that worse in some way? And I would argue that it is. Because there's a social and emotional component here that, again, is unquantifiable, right? You can quantify the number of COVID cases, but it's very difficult to quantify the number of subtle mental health issues that exist in our community from this loss. Right? And athletics is just one small component, so I don't want to overstate the importance of athletics, but this is part of the larger discussion.
Craig, one, one, my last question.
Sure.
I know you addressed this for the fall sports. If a team, whether it be our team or any other team in the pod, they come up with a positive test of an athlete, does that team have to withdraw from the pod and playing? Or is they self-quarantine that one player? I can't remember what you said before, what happens when somebody tests positive uh on a team, team sport.
Yeah, so our Pod Six in the fall sports, we were interrupted a number of times because um some of the spreading events that happened in our, our local North Central Mass area impacted all the communities. The process goes like this. If we find out that there is a contact, a close contact, that has moved on to the athletic field, um the other school is notified that a close, that it, uh, there was a COVID positive. If we then, in conjunction with our health office and the Board of Health, determine who would be considered a close contact from the city of Pittsburgh perspective, their staff at their school would then work to consider who would be close contact from their definitions. They would work to contact all of those people in their school system, and all students would then go on quarantine. I've seen it impact in the case of a cross-country situation, only a couple of kids. I've seen it impact in the course, in the case of a field hockey team, two full teams except one goalie. So really, what I would say is there is i- if we're going to skew to one side of the other, where one side is caution and one side is reckless, we skew towards the cautious side.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
I'd just like to say you've done a standing job of providing an awful lot of information tonight. And I, I don't think anybody could do it any better. I think we're in very good shape for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
There being no other questions, Craig, thank you. And I guess just stick around for the action items. Mr. Schalfo, can you just run through the budget items for us?
We have a few donations to be accepted this week. We have a donation of a hundred Thanksgiving Day meals that were donated by the City United Church of Lunenburg. Uh, those were donated to uh, the enrollment office for food that was distributed to families in need across the entire district. At Rhine Gold, we have another donation of four um HD headphone sets that were donated. These included microphones from a parent, Sarah Cameron, uh, to be used by students at the school. And finally, we have the Hanford Grocery Stores donated three thousand twenty-eight dollars to Pittsburgh High School to be used for a variety of student activities at the discretion of Principal Roach. We also have two grants to be submitted, the Secondary School Virtual Coursework Grant. And that is for eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. They'll be submitted to uh provide resources, robust resources for online course options for middle and high school students in grade six through twelve. And this is for students who cannot do the in-person learning. Uh, we also have a Nellie May grant for supporting mental wellness for twenty thousand dollars. And this will be to support uh mental health across the the region, mental health. And then finally, we have the Mass Grad Promising Practices Grant to be accepted. And that was for twenty thousand dollars, and that was written by Goodrich Academy. And that is again to support students at schools with um high-risk students that are not graduating from high. And then finally, um, we have a number of action items tonight um related to the FY twenty-one allocations for school choice monies. Uh, these are an annual allocation. They were voted on at Resource Subcommittee in November, um totaling six hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and six dollars.
Okay. That's a wrap, Mr. Schalfo?
It's a wrap.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I I turn it back over to you for the action items.
Uh, I would uh make a motion that we bundle twenty-one dash twenty-two with the exception of pulling out twenty-one dash twenty-five. So twenty-one dash twenty-two, twenty-one dash twenty-three, twenty-one dash twenty-four. Continuing twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four.
I'll make the motion that we bundle.
Second.
She made?
Second.
And seconded. Ms. Greenleys, would you read the roll, please, for this vote?
Are we voting on the bundle or on the?
We're voting, uh, the motion was to bundle those that I cited, with the exception of the vote uh to approve the superintendent recommendation for all learners of all cohorts, cohorts to participate in MIAA DESI-sponsored interscholastic winter sports in the twenty-twenty-one school year. That will take separately.
So just to clarify, we're voting to bundle, then we'll vote to approve the bundle. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Um, Mayor DiNatali.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
We are unanimous.
All right, uh, uh, this next vote is to approve twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four. All in favor?
A motion?
Sorry, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Ms. Greenleys, a vote, please.
Yes, Sir Mayor DiNatali.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
We are unanimous.
Thank you. Now taking up twenty-one, action item twenty-one dash twenty-five, who approve the superintendent's recommendation for all learners of all cohorts, hybrid and remote to participate in MIAA DESI-sponsored interscholastic winter sports in the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year.
Motion, we approve twenty-one, twenty-five superintendent recommendation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Greenleys, would you have a reading of the roll, please?
Yes. Mayor DiNatali.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes. Yes.
We are unanimous.
Thank you. I don't believe there's a need for executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Can we do this by acclamation? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Stay safe and healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.